Oh, yeah, no, we're a little short today, but we do have a quorum, so we are happy to get started. I think that our objective today is to try and be as brief as possible. It's beautiful outside, so without further ado, we have a motion to accept the present agenda.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, the public may address the board on any topic. It does not have to be related to the agenda. Do you have anybody online?
We have three people joining us online today.
Anybody in the virtual world want to comment?
It does not appear so.
Okay.
Move next to board comment. Does any of the members have anything they'd like to? No, I'm going to bring up one idea floated as a test balloon now, and then we'll see where it goes from here. So there's a, you know, I work for another school district and they do an interesting thing at the board, where they sort of list all the things that they were able to go to each month. I think that it builds a nice sense of ownership over things, but it also builds a sense of community. It gets us there more often. And, and I, you know, I think that maybe some, maybe it's nice to hear from the community what we're attending, what we're not attending. I'm just going to put it out there and see if maybe every other meeting we do a share, share out. I know we all attend a lot of things, a lot. In fact, I attended the library eclipse party, social. That was lovely. Yeah, it's fun. It was super fun. So kudos to Amanda and her team. Yes. Yeah. Kids, gotta love them. All right, anybody else? Nope, okay. Superintendent's reports.
All right, give me a brief moment. I'll bring up some sporting slides here. Keep us a little organized or keep me organized, I should say. So first of all, before I get started, I wanted to give a couple shout outs. First of all, to Andy and Frank and the team here at the high school. If you get a chance, next time you're in, they single-handedly painted the gym. I just took another look. It's fresh. It's, they took all the placards and banners down and they, they rolled it and it looks sensational. Of course, the motivation there was to paint it before we do any work in terms of new bleachers or seats. And they took that on themselves over the break last week and we're eternally grateful for that. That was a major undertaking and that was in addition to everything else they had going on and that they were doing that was scheduled for the week. I also wanted to, well, and we also, as part of the capital outlay project for this budget year, we completed the painting of the auditorium. So if you have a chance, take a peek. The, the ceiling has never looked better, going from the stained watermarks to what it looks like now and the fresh coat of paint on the sides and, and of course, the accent paint on the front. It just looks great. So again, that was in an effort to do things in the correct order and paint before we do any other work in that auditorium. So kudos to Mike for managing that and our architects who are here to listen to our update on the capital project, who help us each year with that capital outlay project. I will delegate that to Mr. Truddy, who speaks with Andy almost on a daily basis. But we will, we will pass along your sentiments of appreciation for sure. Another shout out, you're going to see on the agenda tonight, we're approving poll workers. You may recall that the board of elections this year, based on all the other activities they had going on, had let us know, let us know early in the process that we'd no longer be able to use their polling machines and they would no longer be coordinating the board of election poll workers for us. So through the efforts of Debbie and Mike, we went out and through, I believe through BOSI's, through a collab, a Cosa agreement, we purchased our own voting machine. They're not inexpensive, but now we own it. In addition to purchasing the machine, we purchased some training and this first year, we, we will also have some onsite support so that there aren't any issues. And we, several of the other Columbia County districts who were in the same position have purchased the same machines that we hope to build some capacity amongst ourselves to support ourselves in the future. But this particular year, we do have an individual from the company who will be onsite and we've extended the offer to Ichabod, who owns the same machine, that should they have an issue, we have somebody kind of local that could help us pull it out. So a little bit of collaboration going on. I don't know if you have any additional comments, but thank you to Debbie. It was a little bit more work this year and not only purchasing the machine, but having to reach out to the poll workers. They're now going to be paid through us rather than just cutting a check to the board of elections. They handle everything. We're going to be handling everything internally. So Debbie, thank you for the, you know, abundance of extra work we created for you in this situation. So thank you. With that said, I just wanted to, program note. Initially, part of the superintendent's report was going to be to honor a request that the board had made to ask John Thorson, our high school principal, to stop by and give us an update that he typically does this time of year regarding our seniors and the capstone projects. John was not feeling well today, so he's not in. So we pushed that to the April 23 meeting. Don't be of any concern, the senior capstone projects do not take place until May 17. As another note, we're working on that, we have not yet published the dismissal time for that day. We're working with the senior team and John to make sure that we get that time dismissal time correct. We'll be putting that out in the next couple of days. So parents are fully aware of when their students will be arriving at home. Remember that, as, as most of you know, kind of speaking to the choir, we dismiss everyone in the district so that all teachers can participate in this wonderful event and they can see some of their students who they may have had in elementary or middle school, complete their capstone project. So that's coming up. Now on to my report. Today I'm going, I'm going to update you on the pre-K survey that we did that ended on March 31st. Give you a quick update on our high school principal search. A quick update on the superintendent's search. A very important update on the capital project. And also on another agenda item that the board had asked that we do much more work on is in regard to our athletic mergers and a plan moving forward. So with that said, quick just note on the preschool interest survey. We have 33, so we're a little less than last year. Now that we have this, we combined this survey with any other inquiries that are made to our registrar or to our school main office. And right now, we believe we have somewhere between 31 and 33 students who have shown interest for the preschool program in the fall. This is down about 10 of last year, right? About 10, we think we ended up with 43 students in our program. And so we're not quite sure, you know, cohorts here do fluctuate. You know, our incoming kindergarten class is higher than expected this year. So we, we believe that we, thinking that this was the second year and parents are now mostly aware of our pre-K program, we were a little surprised that the numbers is at 33. We did make sure that there was information on the website and Facebook, information that went home to existing parents. And of course, we had it in our last newsletter. So the cert, the registration is ongoing. The survey is, even though we had asked for feedback by the 31st, parents who discover or come forward with interest can still either complete the registration process or contact our registrar. We will take participants right up until we start. Now, just as a little bit of a caveat, we ran three classrooms this year. And as you recall from all the discussions we've had in the past, the enrollment in each classroom that then contains a teacher and a TA is 18. That would mean that with three classrooms, we have the capacity of 54 and we ran a program with 43, giving us some more favorable class sizes in pre-K, which I can't imagine being a pre-K or kindergarten teacher. Kudos to our, our, our teachers who spend all day with these little kiddos. However, we are going to have to, at some point, make a decision as to whether we need three sections or not. And given the current numbers, you know, 18 and 18 is 36, if my math is right. And so we have, not only do we have some existing capacity right now, but we will have to examine whether we will run three sections or not. Mainly because we only get funding for the students who attend and three sections could have a budget impact. So in the coming weeks, coming month or two, we'll be able to update you on whether we end up running a section or not. Now, you might be thinking, well, that may have a staffing impact. Well, we have a plan for that. Right now, if one of our pre-K teachers is no longer needed for a pre-K section, we'll be reassigning them to another section within the building because we still have at least one open unfilled position that we can jockey around. So we don't believe at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, that anyone will have to be displaced or lose their position who's currently employed. But we may very well be looking at only two sections of pre-K. So we can, and again, feel free to ask questions now or. So our pathway to the high school, new high school principal, you have seen this slide numerous times. I've updated it a little bit and I've put in some dates in red that have shifted a little bit and I will give you some options to think about. So kind of fast forwarding to where we had said we thought we'd be today, which was meeting the new candidate, either the last board meeting or today, through some scheduling conflicts and some certification, things that we're, we're working through. We are now scheduled for the board to meet the candidate in executive session on the 23rd. With that said, I want to propose that you think about a couple variations after that. And here are your three options. First is that you meet the individual on the 23rd and we prepare a recommendation for hiring on May 14th, which is typically how we would handle an appointment. If we don't want to wait till May 14th, which adds another three weeks to the process, one of the things that I wanted to propose is that you entertain, like we did a meeting or two ago, having an executive session upfront on the 23rd at 5:00 PM to meet the candidate. And then we can have a resolution prepared. Should you agree with our recommendation and want to appoint them that evening, we could do that. Or a slight variation of that would be, we could have the regular meeting at 5:00. We could go into executive session to meet the candidate, which is what we're typically going to do now. And then, and this is a variation, because you don't usually do this, you could come out of executive session and if everything went well and was in order, we could, you could entertain a resolution after executive session, appointing the individual. I'm not sure whether you appoint the person on April 23rd or May 14th makes a lot of difference because as this process has evolved, we are, we've worked with the individual and their start date will be July 1. So whether we appoint them on the 23rd of April or May 14th, the only difference would be, it would give us a few more weeks to potentially schedule some transition meetings and/or some meet and greets, that kind of thing. So something for you to think about. I don't think we need to decide that right now. You can have a conversation at some point and let me know what your preference is as a board. Any good with that one? Okay, just a couple notes on the soup, just keeping everyone up to date on the superintendent's search. We are right on timeline. So as you have previously heard, the applications have hit the street. I know the, the search consultant has been in touch with the board, letting them know periodically the candidates that they're receiving credentials from. We did have the survey that we did regarding superintendent's search. That survey ran from, ran the month of March. We did close that survey down and I'm happy to report that we ended up having 203 responses. Those responses have been compiled and shared with the consultant. And, and you know, I want to see if I can make this a little bigger because I don't know if this is. Yeah, this, it's not, it's not live yet. So you can see that, I'll have to read it to you, but basically the, the yellow was a parent of a child in the district. The blue is an instructional staff member. The red was a non-instructional staff member. The purple was a student in the district. And the green was, sorry, it's kind of blurry, a community member without any children. So it looked like about 44% of the responses came from parents with children in a district and 31% came from instructional staff. And I wish I had the percentages on the red. So you, almost three quarters of the responses came from either parents and/or staff. So, and so moving to the next slide, because that'll, so on the 16th, the board is having a special meeting. They'll immediately go into executive session. That meeting will take place at the district office in the superintendent's conference room. At that meeting, they will go over some of the results of the survey and that way, that will help inform some of the questions that are formulated to ask the candidates during the interview process. Also, we've mentioned this before, but I've added a timeframe to it, is we are forming five search committees. Those invitations have all been constructed and they will go out the day after the board meets with the consultant on the 17th, inviting students, administrators, support staff, teachers and teacher assistants, and a note to the public on how they can request to participate. And just as a side note, because we anticipate that there will be potentially quite a few members of, who are parents or community members, the board will be selecting a subset of those who indicate interest to serve on that committee. And those meetings, I took that slide out, will take place from June 11th, 12th and 13th. All, all day long, those candidates will be here. Each candidate will be here for one day. And here are the timeframes that those search committees will be, or stakeholder committees, you should say, will meet with those candidates. And then it is the hope at this point that on June 13th or shortly thereafter, the board will be able to select a successful candidate. So that's a quick update on the superintendent's review. Now on to some very interesting and critical information. And I do want to acknowledge that Matt Monahan from SEI Design, one of the principal members of that architectural firm, is here tonight to also help support my, the information I'm about to give you and, and be available to ask, to answer any questions that you may have. So what I'm about to share with you is mainly based on the fact that we opened the public bids last Wednesday. And I know Muriel was here and, and bought the weather on that day, so thank you. In general, we had a decent turnout of bidders in many of the areas. So that was encouraging on one level. What I'm going to do today is give you more of a high level update and know that there's much more work that we have ahead of us in the coming weeks. This afternoon, Mike and I met with Matt, Matt Schools and folks from Colliers, our construction management, and went over various aspects of what I'm sharing with you today. But again, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to answer some very needed questions on how we can inform our steps to move forward. So there are a couple of major concerns at this time. I am a bit disappointed to report that of all the bids that we received, and again, they were in, in all of the trades, we had several bids, but we didn't, we did not receive a bid from a GC. I believe we had about three or more general contractors request bid packets. But at the end of the day, none were received during the opening. As part of this process, SEI Design and Colliers have reached out to all the people or most of the vendors who have either submitted a bid or who requested a bid packet and didn't to ask certain questions because we need to inform our decision-making going forward. The other piece that we have is a major concern. And again, we're in the midst of analyzing this. We have some information related to it, but not all. And that is the HVAC project proposal number two at MED came in. I don't know what the best adjective, extraordinarily higher than we had expected. So then it begs the question, why and what's next? So of the interviews that have taken place and the conversations that have taken place with some of the bidders, that here are some of the responses that we're receiving. And again, I put this together today, that's everything that's going on. So if there's some grammatical errors, I apologize. But right now, the labor market is tough. Finding the general contractors, the, the other bidders universally reported to us, finding enough people to do the work is challenging for them. And so one of the things that they had alluded to us was there is, there's plenty of full amount of work out there and that at least two of the GCs felt that they could not handle this project in addition to the other, other projects that they had going on. And one of the vendors said that they, they, after taking a closer look at the project, the project was too big for their firm, their smaller GC firm. And they looked at this and they could never get enough labor for them to, to become a GC. So that, that's two of it. The other thing that probably worked, the, one of the, worked against us in the greatest manner was the compressed timeframes of only two summers and only two months. So in, in general, the work schedules. And let me expand on that just briefly. So first of all, we had received some early inquiries during the bidding process as to what kind of flexibility we might have during those timeframes. What do I mean by that? Well, vendors are looking to know, can they work a second shift? Can they work weekends? Do we have swing spaces? Can we move four classrooms at a time somewhere else in the district or somewhere else in the building? Or would we entertain temporary classroom space so that they could work, come in and not have to clean up at 11 o'clock at night so that the building can be occupied the next day? Or could they work through the school year and move their schedule from eight weeks to nine months? So we, we did indicate to them that we had some flexibility in terms of, well, if they wanted to work a B shift during the summer, not a problem. We have no issue with that. But however, we don't have the capacity currently to provide for any swing spaces. You heard me last month or last meeting talk about when we visited Ichabod, they created some swing spaces at another building. They bus kids back and forth and while they did. What's swing space? So you swing four classrooms over to another area in your district so that the contractors can take over. Once they finish those rooms, they give you those back. And, and there's a lot of logistical planning that goes on with swing spaces. But with that Ichabod, if you remember, they, they used the middle school, I believe. And they were able to do construction during the school year because of that. So that, that offered tremendous flexibility. The other thing that's, that I shouldn't say often, that's occasionally used, you've seen them, are the classroom trailers. Less than desirable, they're temporary spaces. You know, you've got to provide the same climate control, technology, access. We don't have a lot of site that would be suitable for that. And there is, there is a large cost involved in that, that we didn't build into the project to begin with. So we did not see that as a feasible option. So because of that, the bidders, there's, you know, it's kind of like putting a square into a round hole, right? So there's certain constraints and there's only certain variables that you can manipulate. So some of the, we, we believe and we, we know through their conversations that some of the increased costs came from the fact that if I was going to run this project over nine months or 12 months, I might have eight guys on site to put in plumbing or do duck work. Well, if I need to do it in eight weeks, I might need 30 guys. I don't know if I can get them, but I need, might need 30 guys and I may have to have them work a B shift, which could be time and a half, weekends could be double time. So we, we see that a large reason for the really stunning cost of the HVAC project at MED was related to the fact that we're trying to do an awful lot of work in an awful short period of time. There was also some, and Matt chime in anytime, there was also some concern around availability of some of the equipment too, in short timeframes. So some of the HVAC equipment, having some of that in time for this first summer would be challenging. So, so we're taking a closer look at that and that one's going to need a little more work. We obviously have a proposition with a fixed amount associated with it. We can't spend any more than what the voters had authorized us to do. So we're going to have to work with the facilities committee in the coming weeks and decide how we handle proposition two and the HVAC work at MED. Okay, so is there any good news? Well, a little bit. We believe that we did get an amazingly favorable proposal on the high school roof. One that we would probably be best suited to take advantage of. It, it was considerably less than the next vendor. SEI had reported us today, they've worked with this vendor. They're fully qualified. We have no concerns over in terms of their ability to do the work. And, and that we are, we are working towards a plan that would keep us on track for this summer to do the high school roof. The high school roof doesn't necessarily need a general contractor associated with it. Some of the work that may have been done by a general contractor can be performed through the roofing contractor. Roofing vents.
So we've got some roof drains, which we could pull out of the plumbing scope and put in the roofer's scope for that piece. And also some steel, where we've got some thicker insulation going onto the roof and there's some blocking and steel and some work with the mechanicals, which could be, it's not mechanical, but as GC, it could be put into the roofing bid. But we're so much lower on the roofing bid that that's actually, I mean, it, it would be a great deal to do that way.
We'd hate to see this bid price slip away from us. It could be, it could really impact down the road, some of the other items. And it could positively impact it because it came in at such a favorable price. The other possibility, and we want to take a closer look at this, is some of the site work, the resurfacing, the milling and resurfacing of the parking lot. Now, I'm not talking about the reconfiguration. Chances are, we're not going to get to that alternative. It's way too costly. But at least the site work would not, would also not need a GC. And so that is something we could, we could possibly get accomplished as well. So other things that we're working on, and, and again, I, my credit to our architect with the, the depth of experience they have and our construction managers and trying to say, how do we salvage what we have to this point? And that is, we would like to repackage the bid. We have a feeling that many of the contractors who either bid or who bid are familiar with the project and could turn around a revised bid relatively quickly as opposed to waiting for months down the road when this is, you know, prices have significantly, potentially significantly changed and they would have to totally reformulate their bids. We, so based on the feedback that we, we received from them in terms of what made this unattractive to them, we believe that once we subtract out the HVAC project at MED, which had all the constraints around construction time, that this will become more favorable to the GCs who are, who were initially interested in our project. So with that in mind, SEI feels that they can turn around a revised set of bids to go back on the street on April 22nd with a 30-day turnaround time and a new, a new public opening in, in May, on the 21st of May. Those are, those dates are, are a little bit tentative for a day or two until we actually check schedules and stuff like that. But that way, at that point, we can assess what additional work that can be done, yeah, even potentially as early as this summer or be put in a proper phasing for the following summer. We want to be very careful at this point and do want, do not want to make any commitment to having to push the project out any further than that at this time. We, we are at this point considering all options, but right now, that's what, that's where we are with things. One last comment and then I'll open it up to any questions to fill in any of the gaps that you might have. And that is, we will be asking, Diane or Debbie will be working on this tomorrow and next day. We, I'd like to bring the facilities committee together so that, that we can go over all of this and some, some more detail and make sure that the committee is on board with any aspect of the, of the project and/or revised plans and discuss any remaining concerns in regard to that. Yes, yeah. So that's, that's, I, I now like to open it up if there's any clarifying questions that we need in terms of the capital project. Yeah, and, and Matt, I don't know if you have any additional commentary?
You've did an amazing job of. You've did an amazing job of sitting through the meeting today and then summarizing everything.
Mike, you were there? Any, do you want to?
Yeah. So I was there with Muriel. So like we said, we were, we were, actually, I was very happy with the number of bidders for everything else. Obviously no GC. Cause I think there's three or four in each one. Pricing was good. It's just obviously you have to have a GC for majority of this project. So we talked today on the plan. I kind of like this plan because we still want to get as much as possible. We have to move forward. We got, you know, we, things have to be done here. So, you know, we're hoping with the rebid that we can move and get as much as possible is done. So.
After digging into this, did you, is there an answer? Was the, was it the MED air conditioning? The reason the mechanical scan is so high? It was?
Yes, it was.
Okay. That's what we thought that day. Okay.
The volume of plumbing, ductwork, controls, equipment costs, it would, you know.
Combined with the schedule.
And the schedule.
So that I think is, brings me to my, my sort of question on this, which I'm going to articulate really badly. So I apologize. As we're looking at this, what are the options? What, what flexibilities do we have? How do we move these pieces around so that we can get this, the work done?
So really that's, we left here on Wednesday of last week in the windstorm. And got right to it Thursday and Friday, met with some of the bidders, called contractors yesterday. Wrapped it up. I, well, we didn't wrap it up. We're in the midst of it. I think Mike got an email from, from our, our CM. Who in, and it was kind of saying, well, we're going to, we're going to meet on Wednesday. And he said, we got a, we have a board meeting tomorrow night. So we got together, had the meeting today. It's still, we're still analyzing data. We're still talking with people, but we have with, with contractors, but we have learned a lot. And we actually feel like it really is a, there really is a silver lining, at least on the, at least on everything other than MED right now. Now, the plus side is MED was a separate proposition. On freestanding on its, on its own. Now that means, you know, on the downside, we can't spend a dollar more on that than was approved by the voters. So if we pull that out, it's still approved from State Ed and things, you know, we can look at the options and we'll have a much better, after the facilities committee meeting and, and a little more research, we'll come up with a lot of options for you to consider. And I, I believe some of them are going to be pretty good and we're going to want to really hit them quickly. Like the, the, the rebid on portions of it, really going, going out in, you know, less than two weeks. Potentially two weeks. And then, then we have some flexibility because we already have approval from SED on everything that, you know, that, that we've talked about and has been included in the capital project. So some of that we may have to look at, you know, at MED. That's probably going to take some, some more consideration.
So how long does, uh, how long does approval last? I mean, what, what point should we go back out to the voters on, on, on something if, if this could fall into two?
So the approval lasts, you know, I, 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 I would say forever, but I, I don't think it, it probably doesn't last that long. But certainly it lasts long enough for us to come up with a plan and decide how to, how to approach that. But it's, uh, that's, that's the component that added a lot of the cost, had a lot of the, the scheduling issues for contractors and the rest of it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. If, so the GC is still, is still the big issue. So I heard changing timelines, scope of C of service. Do we have flexibility around? Like we were looking for this for two summers, eight weeks. Do we have flexibility to add a summer? Do we have?
So as I, so what the G, what the feedback from the GCs that we got is if we take the HVAC project out of MED, it becomes much more attractive right off the bat. Or because we take all those constraints around that particular project away from them. So we're hopefully that that dimension may do it. We want to be careful. The answer to that is yes, we could go to summer of 26. But we don't want to get there just yet because with that could come another escalation cost that we don't have built into the project. If we have to do that, it may or may not impact the number of items that we can, we can accomplish. I do think it's fair to say that at this point, we really need to spend a lot more time with the HVAC project at MED. Please know that I'm all about the expectations that we set with the voters and the taxpayers on what we can accomplish in this. This is not the scenario that I would hope that we were in. But we're going to have to be very transparent about that conversation. I think if I had to use a crystal ball tonight, we'll have to go back and taking all of those factors into consideration, specific to that project. We may have to recost it and then facilities committee will have to say, is this price tag something that we feel could go back out to the voters to do at a later time? Uh, I think now we have a much better sense for what, what we're up against and would have to design a project that either allowed for that kind of cost or need alternative concessions or not concessions, alternative arrangements for the work to be accomplished. So I think there's a lot more work in terms of that project that ME did. I don't think it's totally off the table, but certainly given some of the numbers that we were given, we're going to have to take a closer look at that. And that's disappointing, right? Our voters came to the table and supported us in the notion that they wanted to add climate control to that building. And the fact that we're not able to do that with that proposition will be something that we need to be very transparent and open about. Once we have all the answers.
So along those lines, last question I would have then was really probably for Mike. Let's say hypothetically, we have to push this out farther or make it a longer term. What does that do financially for planning next projects and these sorts of things?
You mean this whole project?
Yeah. Like we went from two summers to three summers.
I don't think that's because our next project, we'd probably be looking at, even if we did this one, probably another three, four, you know, four years now. Cause we've got to try to put some money away to.
That's what I was wondering. It's really the.
So I don't think that impact's going to be a big, big deal. My concern's more the cost of another summer.
Okay.
Cause I'd love to get as much of this prop one as, you know, as much as possible. And I do want to just, I do want to thank SEI colleagues, Matt came tonight. Cause we did it, we opened bids Wednesday afternoon, I think it was, and, and they contacted all, you know, the mechanicals, they got pricing. I called you yesterday, I think afternoon, you know, I said, we need to meet because of the board. So they put together the conference call and had, you know, good, you know, a good idea, right? You know, so far and they're really moving. We do need to move forward if we're going to.
Right, for sure.
So I want to thank them for that. What do you have, Sal?
No, I was going to say in terms of finance, you never know, right? Where the economy is going to be, but we don't, when we go out to bond it, there could be, it could be the more favorable environment and that helps us a little bit. Or it could be more, you know, conservative environment.
And the one thing we weren't, some projects we would have been bonding right now, paying for next year. We, we would, I did not want to do that. I wanted to wait a year because of the tax cap and the implications of that. So we'll be able to, I'm going to work with the, um, the bond, you know, the bond manager on this to kind of level, try to level debt service and not have an impact to the district.
Yeah. And I think on the bonding part, we'll probably get a better interest rate longer, longer out than we are right now. That's what I'm hearing. But, but the, I think the flip side of that is this is, as you said, my building the savings back up. That puts us a year farther away from being able to do that too.
Can I go way up? Do we have to make a decision about the revised bids? Do we, or is it, is this a yes? If we take the MED out of those revised, revised bids?
Right. We, we have, we have, we really have no choice. I think we have to take MED out. So we are going to go back out to the street.
The mechanicals will come way down. Okay. All right. That's, that's.
But we, right. They're going to put, the new package would be a version of what we put out before without all the stuff related to any of those.
A lot of stuff will come down. Right. Okay.
I have a question that Mr. Fortran would probably, he's going to hate me the minute I throw it out here. But for many years, our fifth grade was at the middle school. Is there any room to move them back, which would leave a group of classrooms at MED to move groups of kids around so they could work during the school year?
Well, so I did, um, charge Mr. Fortran this past school year and he's, they're in, in the midst of working on this. That's come up several times in terms of, would it be in the district's best interest to move the fifth grade back to the middle school where it once was? Not necessarily thinking that we would do that for the purpose of the capital project, but several teachers have felt that that might be a good programmatic decision. Before we jumped into that, there were a number of things that I asked Dr. Root and, and Brett to look into in terms of staffing, scheduling, programmatic considerations. And they're, they, they did form a committee and they are taking a look at it to come and make a recommendation for the 25, 26 school year. That, that was born out of the fact that we were, we were kind of busting at the seams at MED. And when we went to three sections of preschool and we have asked, Head Start for their room back, it seemed like it was a good time to revisit the potential for the fifth grade program going back to the middle school. With that said, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, but down the road, a number of years from now, you know, with declining enrollment, I think building utilization has to, you have to take a closer look at building utilization. And I could actually see an equal argument to bring the sixth grade back to MED. Because at some point, the, the configuration of the middle school with 200 students in it might down the road become a financial consideration for the district. So I don't want to go back to my predecessor and, and the efforts to consolidate. But at some point within the next decade, I think that conversation needs to be looked at.
I, I'm just thinking, even if it's for a period of time, just to, because they were saying, one of the things that could affect the price is if there were sections of MED that could be moved during, you know, worked on during the year.
So we have, we would have, next year, we would have three sections. I don't know if those three classrooms would buy us enough for that swing space. But also in addition to all the support services that are tied, the encore, you know, our art, our music, all the AIS that's already tied to that building. It would just require a lot of planning in terms of getting that, those three classrooms over to the middle school by next September. So it, it's certainly something we can think about. You know, I don't think Brett is, we've done, we've had some sprawl there as well. But there is still a little bit of capacity. It does, it also speaks to potentially displacing special education. To do that, we, we would have to, to, to provide for the fifth grade to go over there. There are things like Brian, Simon's operations, the registrar, we'd have to, in, in this plan, my understanding is we would need those rooms back. And so they would have to be displaced somewhere. So there's, it's a heavy lift for, for September. Is that a fair?
But what, but would that even be on potential for the following year?
Well, the problem is right now, we, we are millions of dollars over on that proposal.
That's why I do it out, not knowing.
Yeah. Yeah. No. So.
Make enough difference if we were able to.
Oh, I see what you mean. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I see that logic. Yeah. I, I, I don't know if.
It, it's worth having in our kit of, you know.
Right. I, I think part of, yeah. And, and maybe my, my fault for not saying that, the schedule was certainly one of the issues. But the controls came in extraordinarily higher than was what was anticipated and the actual equipment cost. So it was a, it was kind of a combination of those three factors. So, but good, good idea of that for sure. On how to create additional spring, swing space.
Just have one question. Is there anything that will preclude us from going with the roofing bid? Do we have to do it as a package or can, is it all broken up so that we could?
The roofing bid is clean and separate. I mean, we would have to, the board would have to award that contract. And then once that was awarded, we would have to establish a handful of change orders to add some of the GC scope into their work. But that would happen after the contract and they, they began to.
Yeah. I was going to say, Mike's reminding me, some of the discussion today was actually to work with SEI Design to come back with a contract at the next board meeting. In some ways, we don't want, we don't want the vendor to. We want to, we kind of want to lock the vendor in.
Want them to wander away.
You know, because what, what starts to happen, aside, aside from his aggressive pricing, if he feels like we're not interested, he's going to move on to the next bid. And, and I don't want to lose him. And I, we're having, I think we were going to have conversations with him this afternoon. It said, hey, listen, we are really interested and we are going to, to the best extent that's in our control, commit to a roofing contract as soon as possible.
You don't need anything from us tonight.
No, but you, you might anticipate a resolution at the 20, meeting on the 23rd, awarding a roofing contract.
Big night.
Get one off the list and then work on the next one.
And, and again, a lot of kudos, right? Because that is a function of the advice and consultation and how we did this to begin with. And you know, what SEI Design had, has, has done in terms of it being the case that that's even an option, right? And not having it tied into some of the other, you know, if you can call them primes, it's a separate prime in itself. And, and, and we're going to put Chris in charge of all this. It's exciting to have you.
Getting to let you get all the jobs.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I know this is, this is near and dear to your heart. So after the meeting, I have no problem giving you the Reader's Digest version of that.
Okay. Yeah. Something else I mentioned, right?
Any, any final words of wisdom?
No. Thank, thank you all. And we'll keep moving and, and get this ready to go as quickly as possible.
And I know Mike did already, but I think from the board as well, thank you very much for, for getting us answers as fast as possible, moving this forward.
Thank you.
Okay. And night is yours. It's better than the last thing you said. All right. I know equally as important to the board is an update on where we are in conversations that we've previously had regarding our, our academic program. I'm going to speak in, I'm going to speak in terms of all sports and then we'll bring it down to, I know football specifically of concern. So the way I would like to propose that we handle this is a much more systemic, broader look at this. Although our lens was quite specifically focused on football last fall, winter and through the winter. I think it merits a step back and a presentation of data that looks across all of our sports. So JB and I are currently working on a comprehensive spreadsheet that looks, the way I envision it is we would have it broken down by season. Fall, winter and spring and by sport. And it would be a longitudinal historical look back several years to the extent that we have the data in terms of each individual sport, what the participation in those years were, what, and for the non-sports people somewhat like myself, what an ideal team size looks like. Where we're providing maximum opportunities for students and what ideal team size would look like if we wanted to be competitive in the sport. With a projection based on historical participation, a future participation. And then from that, make some inferences in terms of identifying the sports that need to be considered for potential merger in the short term and perhaps in the long term. I was surprised in my conversation with JB over the last few days, how a couple of other sports have kind of emerged as being identified as something that we would want to have, have some consideration around. With that said, the other thing that I think we need to manage coincident to that is conversations with our collaborators and partners. And, uh, you know, one of the things that I felt had a little bit of a disconnect in, in the fall, when we were looking specifically at football, was the conversations that was, that were being had amongst ADs in the county and in the conference and amongst the superintendents. And sometimes the slight variation in or gap between those individuals. or gap between those individuals within the same district. So my thought is, and JB's working on the AD end, I'll work on the superintendent end, that we are, and we're giving ourselves a few weeks because I think for scheduling purposes, we'll need it. I would like to bring together a broader stakeholder meeting, which would include superintendents at a minimum in the county and the AD and their ADs to come around a table, either in person preferably or virtually, to have a conversation if for nothing more than to establish a baseline for where we each are in our athletic programs and where we've see some potential for collaboration, either in the near term or long term. With that said, I also think we should form an athletic merger advisory committee. We would solicit interest from multiple stakeholder groups, but as at a minimum, I would believe the superintendent, a board member or two who might be interested, the AD and administrators and coaches, perhaps some physical education teachers and parental parental or community representation to form a committee that could take a look at this and discuss some of the various challenges and or opportunities that would present themselves once the data is better understood. I want, I'll give you an example, you know, and again, I don't want, it's not a spoiler alert because I really want the data to drive our our decision making. But you've heard, you know, and we'll go to football next, but you've heard in the past, there's some low numbers with girls tennis. What does that look like? Do we, do we, do we continue on with a couple tennis players? Do we, and JB will be available to discuss some of the alternatives in the future in terms of some schools around the state have entertained co-ed teams. What are the advantages and disadvantages? They are different season sports, so there's some challenges with that. There are also always some challenges when you have a co-ed sport. Maybe that that's not the right solution. Maybe the solution is to seek some of our other colleagues and see where their tennis teams are and could we merge and form a team that would be competitive at the conference level. One example that JB shared with me is, I think it's Greenville, has doubles teams. They have, they did not play a doubles match this past season because there's no one in the conference that they can play against. So, you know, again, I'm still in a learning curve on this, but it seems like the conversations have to include a balance between providing opportunities with students, but also understanding where our desire lies in terms of being competitive. Is it putting a tennis team together or is it putting a competitive tennis team together? And what I mean competitive, I don't mean to be to win the conference. I mean, can actually play meets and do things like that. The other example, and I thought this was a really good example, and I don't know if you were aware of this, it was new to me, but bowling. We've got a pretty decent bowling team, but the numbers are low. And JB had let me know that just recently, there was a conversation with a neighboring district who doesn't have bowling, but has several bowlers who would like to bowl. Those are the kind of opportunities that I think we really are trying to identify and have conversations about. I'm not here to suggest that it's easy, that that any of these will just materialize. But none of them are going to materialize unless we have conversations around shared, shared vision and shared objectives. Football, we spoke specifically about, and I I asked a question, and I appreciate that it was on JB's mind as well. And that is, we don't, I don't think anybody here wants to end up in the same situation we were last year with sitting here in November and saying, oh, we don't have enough numbers, but why don't we know that? I know that's been expressed to me. So one of the things I asked him, I said, is there such thing as, I mean, I know, I said, when do you when you solicit interest in a seasoned sport? And he's usually says about thirty days before the sport begins. And I said, in this particular case, that makes us go into this situation blindly. And I can't see how we won't end up in the same situation if we wait till, I don't know, July fifteenth or July thirtieth to figure out whether we have enough kids to play modified football, right? So what I, what JB and I have been discussing is just like we did for preschool, why don't we encourage, and again, we know things change. Parents, kids move, their interest changes, kids get hurt. But why don't we in May or certainly before mid-June, before students leave us? What if we do an early interest registration slash survey? Let us capture all of those kids who are interested in the program. And I'm, I'm speaking specifically to modified football. I think we're comfortable with the fact that our varsity program is strong. We don't really have any concerns currently with that program for next year. But it certainly would be nice, if you recall, we did a pretty comprehensive survey of middle school or of those students who would be eligible to participate in modified sports next year. And we're still at that fringe, right? But I think as we get a little closer to the actual pinning down of students, whether they want to play or not, having them pre-register might give us some better insight into whether we can actually field a team. So with that said, we can't, you know, we can't find student, we can't get students out of the thin air. But we all know that if we can get enough students to put uniforms on them and have a couple extras for substitutes and or injuries, we may be able to have our own viable program for next year. So this would help us understand what those numbers look like. The other thing I found out, well, first of all, two things. We are, I guess, cautiously optimistic that we will be able to have a modified program for next year. And in doing so, JB has requested that our modified team be scheduled for next year. I would imagine, this is an inference I'm making, that if we didn't do that and we had a team, we'd have a team without a schedule. So the fact that he's gone ahead and we have a placeholder for modified sports means that we have a modified team. If in the off chance that we are not able to field a team, my understanding is the conference has discussed that and it becomes a bye week for those teams that would have played us. So there's no harm in having scheduled that because I guess the scheduling, as you remember with the merger deadlines, is done well in advance for football. The last piece of this, which I was, it was new to me and I was extremely encouraged, is in the fall, we talked about merging multiple levels, right? We talked about varsity and modified. Well, what I understand now is that any time that a varsity merger is to take place, we were subjected to the the conditions that we all made familiar, that we became familiar with in terms of the section two deadlines of, I believe, like February first. Well, there's something called a sub varsity merger. And that is, there is some rules in the section, which I was encouraged by, that says that within ten days of the start of the season, and I, and I said, I'd give an example, you could petition or submit an application to the section to merge sub varsity teams. So the 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 hypothetical example is, we really want twenty, about twenty students to be in our modified team. I believe you need to suit up, if you recall, I think it's sixteen. JB says that, you know, eighteen is on the low end when you have injuries and kids who can't show it up. It'd be nice to have about twenty kids, but let's say fourteen show up. Well, we know that that probably makes it almost near difficult, if not impossible, for us to have a modified team. But we get on the phone and Taconic has eleven kids that show up for modified. Conversations can take place as long as they take place within ten days of the season start. And we can say for this season, we can apply to the section for a sub varsity merger. That was new to me. If 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 it's not a surprise to you, great, but that was new to me. So those are some of the conversations that we have going on. And I'm open, you know, some of this is just what seems to be the next logical steps. I did spend quite a bit of time on the phone with superintendents of not only the county, but of you know, we do have some geographic limitations, you know, we're not going to be merging football with Fonda Fulton Bowl, right? The the teams have to be in somewhat close geographic proximity in terms of practices and other things. The other thing that I think's emerging, and JB didn't really, I I, and I think this is something we can explore. And if anybody has additional information, I know we got a couple football parents here, is I'm really intrigued with Catskill and was it Carroll, doing the nine V nine, right? You know, as as Dan, Dan seems very excited about the possibilities. I've never seen a nine V nine, but they say it's fast paced, it's exciting. And it down the road, it only works if you have enough teams in that conference that are doing that. And that is section nine, I believe. So some of those teams have decided. So I think getting superintendents and ADs around the table to say, how do we systemically solve some of these challenges that we have with districts who have declining enrollments and declining? Well, and and I remember the meeting specifically, our participation levels are pretty high, given, given our student enrollment, right? We have, our students are very interested in our sports programs. I think what is different is we have hundreds of fewer students feeding that pool. And again, I don't want to rehash everything, but I do remember specifically one of the parents saying, well, we went through this in the early two thousands and, you know, it 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 turned around. But I think it turned around when we still had eleven hundred kids in the district. I think this is a different problem. So I'm going to stop there and if not tonight, I'm open to any additional feedback that you might have regarding the plan.
Question. Did I?
And this is in, I did, I did put this, I did put this slideshow in executive, it'll go in public after tonight, but it's there late in the day.
Varsity, another word for junior varsity?
I think sub varsity, in my, in my mind, is anything except varsity. So whether it's, it's not, don't think of sub varsity as a team, it's anything but varsity. So if it's JV or modified, any, any team except varsity falls into that sub varsity category. Yeah, I I thank you for that, the distinction. Sub varsity is not a team.
What, what section do you say that Catskill and Carroll are playing?
They're in section nine.
So we can play across sections? In other words, could we play basketball in section two and play football in section nine?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
No.
No.
I think you have to play within your section.
Yeah, I think so too.
Well, that was a question that JB and I discussed today, and that is, I asked him, and this is, it's a starting point in my mind. Getting the Columbia County superintendents and ADs together, I said, should we be looking at getting the superintendent and ADs together that represent our conference? And and again, we can always modify that because I want to be talking to the right people. Like, sitting down with the Ichabod superintendent and AD may not mean, may or may not make a difference to us. But I don't want to exclude them either because as JB, again, I the example I use for bowling happens to include them. So just because they're in a different class, doesn't mean that if they have a sport that's emerging that there wouldn't be a potential to, you know, merge. And again, I do apologize, when it comes to like, and like, you may know some of this, and we were going, we're getting into this a little bit with Hudson. When you start merging within the same section, but in different classes, how that affects the merge team, for me, would be something I would want, I would want to misspeak about. So.
I just have one question about the initial meeting on May thirteen. Is that, is that something that's actually been?
No.
Has that been coordinated with?
So no, that's put there as a placeholder that will begin to reach out to those superintendents based on availability and ADs.
Okay. But from what you, you said you you spoke to several or quite a few.
Well, you know, back in the fall, when we were really looking to see what our options were, I spoke to each of those superintendents. And in addition to some outside of the county, but within close geographic proximity to us because we wanted to see if that was at all feasible. You know, Brent, there are, there are, I, I, I'm confident to say that there are probably some schools that are outside our county, but closest, closer to us than some of the schools in our county, right? I mean, Germantown is not a stone's throw away where Skodeck is right across from us. So I don't, again, I think it's, this will probably be more of a function of size and geographic proximity than it is just, just.
Yeah, it sounds like there's three factors in size, proximity, and then sections.
Yes.
Unless we learn more about that aspect. Chris, were you just a little?
No, it just, I, I think the way you're laying this out to me, I think, I think you're kind of formulating the right direction, in my opinion, it sounds good. It just seems like there's a lot of information.
Spitballing it a little bit.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I, I'm calling it athletic merger advisory committee. Maybe it becomes an athletic advisory committee. In a couple of districts I've been in, those committees do exist. That might, you know, that may serve long term more than just merger. I mean, it could be that that leads to fundraising, it leaves, I'm just, you know, thinking through that that could be a valuable, it's, it's really putting together a stakeholder group that that can give you valuable feedback in advance of just having like a meeting, right? We get together a large group of people like we did in the entourage, that's great. But a small advisory committee with the right representation could help us understand what some of the concerns and challenges are.
Like a C-Plat concept for.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I think, I think it all sounds good to me, but at the I'm just wondering, you know, depending on how quickly the information comes and people get involved and, you know, how this flows. If if not enough information is actually gathered by the fall, what happens? Like, can we afford to go another year? Like, what, I guess, what does it mean if if we don't make decisions by the fall?
Well, let's, let's play out a couple hypotheticals and help me with this. So right now, I think modified football is on our radar screen. And so I I feel confident that we know what some of the different permutations are related to that. One is, if we do nothing and we don't get the minimum number of players, we won't have a season and we won't have a schedule. That would not be our hope because we seem to have enough players who are interested in modified football. And we all know, we also know that that's a critical stepping stone to future varsity viability, right? So we don't want to lose that, that that pipeline, if you will. So I think that that's why I kind of drilled down, the football one is of particular interest. I think the the sub varsity merger could could eventually emerge as an option. That to me probably speaks to more of a short term, hey, how many do you have this year? How many do we have? If we put our, put our heads together or put our teams together, we could be, we can, we can compete. I would say that JB or someone else will probably have to answer more about like what that looks like, if it's Taconic and us, do we, do we stay in, do we stay in section two class? We stay in section two, but do we stay in class D or C or whatever? Those kinds of things, I, I can't answer for you tonight. But I think what I got excited about was the fact that we really need to do the due diligence across all of our sports, right? And and, you know, right now, I know we've got some soccer dads and moms in the room. That program is healthy, but that could change, right? And so understanding and building models that are in place with other districts should two years from now, the soccer pipeline dries up and we're sitting with the fact that we have a team with one substitute, right? So I don't know, I don't want to over exaggerate that, but I think it's new, I think it's new and emerging. And we did, I know Fred had specifically kind of requested this, not necessarily seeing anyone else kind of, I guess, the leadership comes out of necessity. I I don't believe we've received a call from any other district except for for Hudson in terms of wanting to have conversations. So, you know, we got to start somewhere. And I'm not sure where it'll end up, but it can't end up any worse than if you don't have a conversation at all, to understand where some other people are.
I just said.
Yeah, absolutely.
They did say something about that. It's a little bit different flavor than having a modified team, because it's a play, but but it would be.
I mean, maybe making a poor assumption, but I would argue that it would be in our best interest to make sure that of the, and I just put two to three, but of the handful of parents in our community members that are involved in this, having some representation from those folks that understand and are involved in Pop Warner probably would be in our best interest. I think there's probably some commonality between those parents who are involved in Pop Warner and those who children play for us too. But they they certainly would bring valuable information to the table.
I just wanted to say, I think this is a great idea. We definitely going forward for all the sports eventually. We have a, have a structure in place to be able to handle things so that we are not going kind of shooting from the hip like we did last winter.
I think the biggest lesson we learned from last year, and of course, if we don't learn lessons, we're destined to repeat our mistakes, is this doesn't, this takes, you need to be looking at this like twelve months, nine to twelve months ahead of time. Because by the time you realize you have a problem, it's too late to really effectively solve.
As we found out.
Like, I didn't know that bowling till today was, so I, you know, I think now we're a little more astute in asking the right questions. But I think by putting the data out there transparently, then you as a board too, will be better informed and can ask questions. questions of, of the team here too, so.
I also think if there's some way that once we form this committee, um, we somehow or another get a section two representative in on this conversation because this is not the only district this is happening to. I think it's time for section two or whatever sections to have at least a representative starting to talk to the school districts to address this problem throughout the state. And if there's some way we could get somebody who could be here to have those information that we need and possibly come up with some alternatives because sports are very important. And it's throughout New York State, we really, they should be a stakeholder.
That's kind of a great idea. Like, I can see like, um, i- if we hold regular advisory committee meetings, um, you know, inviting a section two representative to come in and maybe explain all those idiosyncrasies around mergers and sub mergers and, and how they see their role uh in terms of facilitating collaborations between teams, right? And, and maybe filtering different, um, people through that, um, committee in terms of, um, resources. I could see that being a very, I, I, I don't want to form committees that don't, um, have, um, that don't make people feel like they're, they're able to contribute and, and have a positive effect on things. So I think this one could be, could be valuable.
I just want to say thanks for, uh, putting your shoulder behind this. It is something that we asked for at a meeting, you know,
It took a little.
A few weeks ago.
A little while, while longer than I.
I mean, we had asked the BOSI's to do it, maybe they're not the right point person, um, but, uh, but I think that, that this initiative is probably going to be replicated in other places uh as a result of the efforts you're putting in there. So, um, so thank you for doing that. I really.
And I'll, I'll give you, um, we'll give you periodic, uh, updates on how I'm making out with, uh, well, definitely, um, on the twenty-third. I will tell you that unfortunately on the twenty-third, there is a softball game. So, um, I'm going to be working with JB, JB between now and then, but I will have to present, um, the results of, of our work. Uh, and then have him, I said, as soon as, uh, we can get him in on a, on a night, if we have a board meeting that doesn't have a game, we'll get him in to answer any questions. Or, um, the other thing that he offered was we could, I can, um, JB and I can take your questions and we can get them answered through email too, because I, there's some timeliness factor here. We don't want to, um, we don't want to, uh, take too much time in, in figuring this all out. And I'll let you know, um, how Diane's making out with, uh, trying to get a schedule for that, that, that mid, mid-May piece. I figured if we didn't hit superintendents and ADs by the end of May, um, we might lose the potential to get them together um as the end of school kind of gets busy for everyone, so. And that is my report.
Thanks for that, Sal. Um, that's some really good stuff. There's a lot going on. I'm, 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 um, I think by and large, though, it's pretty, uh, it sounds like we're, we're solving what we can and working on what we can. Right, we have, uh, committee reports, uh, policy committee? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, geez.
My bad.
Uh, no, my bad. I, I, I know, um, you want to.
Yeah, I, I, I know, you don't even need the slides.
Okay.
Um, so typically we would adopt the budget tonight, the property tax report card, and I would send that out to the state and prepare everything, you know, for the public hearing and the newsletter and all that. But I spoke with Sale, we did meet with finance, um, we came up with the budget with the information at the time. But we do have some flexibility in our schedule, so years past, we tried to do it tonight, but we can go to the next meeting. In some years, we do that if the budget isn't, um, done yet. So, local and the legislators have not agreed on a budget, so I thought it'd be in the best interest to wait, um, to see where that goes. And then I'll go through all the slides and adopt the property tax report card at the next meeting. Uh, just on a real high level, um, some promising news. It sounds like, until it's done, you know, I won't say it is done, but it sounds like, um, that Hold Harmless Aid that she wanted to eliminate the nine hundred thousand dollars, looks like that will be put back in place. Uh, I think she's willing not to tackle it this year. They are going to have discussions going forward in future years, so that would be a huge help for the district. When I went out with finance, we were at about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand in the hole, uh, because nine hundred was hers. And we also had some, we lost some other aid because we're wealthier. So that, uh, I was going to use all nine hundred and seventy-five thousand in savings, and that would have been a huge problem. Um, so if that comes back and we're seventy-five thousand in the hole, now that'd be much better. And then I spoke with, uh, the committee. So right now, uh, the tax cap's three point one, so since I've been here, it's fourteen, or there's fourteen levies, I think nine of them, or nine out of, nine out of thirteen, we've come under the cap when we can. So my recommendation at the committee was two point nine eight, uh, which was under the three point one. And then there is some discussion about just not only the Hold Harmless, but giving kind of like they did in years past, a minimum increase, you know, one, two, you know, who knows what it'll be three, but we'll see if that comes to fruition. If that does, we talked about bringing that tax levy down a little more, using that, that extra savings to do that. So, but we'll do all that at the next meeting and I'll go through all the slides and such.
Thanks, Mike. Right, uh, now we're into committees, reports, uh, policy committee?
I feel like I keep repeating myself. We are still, uh.
We all know they're not the same policy.
No, they're not, but we are making some serious progress.
Yeah.
Um, we, um, Rachel, Rachel is on our committee again, and she had split up the seven thousands into bits, um, things that were easy to fix, things that were what we call harder lift and then major mergers. So we got through the easy edits and we are now in the, um, the harder ones right now. So there, it's going to take a couple of meetings, I think, to really do the right job for these. But, um, we're getting there. We're, we really want to have all of them done and ready to go before the end of the school year. But, um, we're on target. We're, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow and, um, I have a feeling it'll be taken up by like one or two policies. So it's going to take pretty much the whole meeting to discuss, but we're, we're getting.
Yeah, uh, this, the transition between Pat and you was really, really seamless. Um, I don't even, I don't remember worrying about it, but I know that we, I know that we spent some time worried about it because, but, but nice job picking it up. It's, uh, that's good. Um, library, C-Plat?
Well, we had a C-Plat meeting today. Our very, very, very busy. Um, they're already working on the next year's programs. Um, they're going, they're, they're going to incorporate four music programs next year, four different kinds of music. Um, they had a hundred people there yesterday for the, um, solar eclipse. They're successful. And.
You're, how many did you say?
Hundred. And she was able to get the glasses. And, um, it was.
I learned, uh, how to look through one of those boxes. Somebody had made one of the, the, the pinhole boxes. That was kind of cool.
Yeah. Um, but the highlight of the meeting for me was the so, was the strategic planning part. I've been on so many committees and foundations that we do strategic planning. This was wonderful. She is, and with John, our, our president, they're right on, right on target and we're probably going to have a strategic, strategic plan probably within the next two months. So it was, and she worked together. She gets ideas from her staff. She's, she does a very good job. So when we have strategic plan, I'll let you know, and that was it.
I just have a question about the music. Can you tell?
Yeah, both. Two that are really are, there's going to be, Gant Band's coming back, and then she's going to have, she's looking for, um, she wants to have four different kinds if she can. Um, Gant Band, and then she, she's looking for something for swing. And then, uh, uh, then strings, and I don't know what the fourth one will be. But, um, yeah, she, it's nice, nice.
TJ Russell still was the Gant Band guy?
Hmm.
Is TJ Russell still the Gant Band guy?
TJ is, yeah.
He's terrific.
Yep.
Uh.
With Mr. Ghetto's blessing.
Yes, right, of course. Legend. Uh, finance committee? We kind of covered just that, right? Okay. Uh, discussion, so every year we're asked to vote on the, um, uh, board seats for the Questar Board, uh, for the public, that is a, um, about a superboard. They're a board of the BOSI's, uh, that draws from board members or representatives from the various districts. Um, so there are, uh, in your attachments, there is a, a voting ballot. We vote as a, as a block, I believe. Is that right? Or do we vote independently on all these? Three seats, right? Okay, um, so we have the election of, uh, the members. The first one up for discussion is, um, Mark Mann, uh, Rensselaer County, um, he's from East Greenbush. Um, I, I guess we're just doing it, are we doing this now, uh, uh, up in, uh, number four, number? Okay. Yep. Yep, do we, are we voting on these guys tonight, though, these folks? No, we're not voting on this. Okay, my bad.
They, you know, we started to vote on that, and then next, next Tuesday is the, the twenty-third is the vote. That all districts will do at the same time.
Okay. All right, so you have a lot of, uh, information. I think there's four attachments in your, um, board packet. Um, and that is the intended budget, um, a letter to the, uh, to the members. Um, please. Backing out on us?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
So that's good for you.
We'll miss you. All right, um, so then we are moving on from this, right? Okay, uh, so, uh, we need a, um, we do a new, yeah, new business, uh, motion to appoint election inspectors and poll workers. Uh, somebody, someone says.
Motion.
Uh, thank you.
I think I mentioned this last time.
That was even faster than I was ready for.
If, if the amount was derived from the same amount that we would have paid, um, the Board of Educator, Board of Elections for these poll workers. So that's how that rate was set.
Okay, so yeah, it's, uh, at eighteen fifty per hour, uh, the vote will be take, will take place on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
On favor, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, motion to approve the external order. Um, and this is, uh, be resolved, Board of Education, approved West Company CPAs, uh, PC has external order in the first year cost of fifteen thousand dollars to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year uh, and a five-year total cost of seventy-seven thousand five hundred.
Motion. Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Mid-Hudson Library System. Um, and this is, uh, we do the same, really?
No, this is new.
This is new.
They had to agree to their, um, I've read all of it because, uh, I've used Mid-Hudson Library System for years. So they just, they had to update their documents, and this is just updated documents that, um, for positive use of libraries.
Okay. All right, so more of a formality than.
It is. It's like them updating like our policy.
It's not transactional.
No, no, it's just like, hey, we've got new legal language. It had been many, many years since they've, uh, addressed it, but it's, um.
Okay.
The motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, motion to accept the consensus agenda, I through K. Um, first, does anybody have any questions about, uh, the consensus agenda tonight?
I just have one question.
Yep.
I've never seen where we have discontinued employment. It's normally, a position is cut, or was that a one-year term that we just aren't continuing?
Um, I'd be happy to answer that in executive session since it really is a specific personnel matter.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, uh, did I get a motion? Okay, I'm sorry, can I have a motion?
I will motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Yep. Um, okay. We would, um, and in that, you'll notice the new school calendar rate, so that's up there.
Yes, so, uh, as, as stated, um, it was, uh, someone, I think at MED who brought to our attention that, um, Good Friday was on the eleventh of April, it was on the eighteenth of April. So we have not changed the break. It is still from the eleventh to the eighteenth, so everyone still gets the six days off. The contractual holiday has been changed from the eleventh to the eighteenth. So the other non-instructional staff will work on the eleventh, but will not have to work on the eighteen. And then the byproduct of that was just an adjustment in terms of the additional implement weather days. Should we exceed the sixth that's built into the calendar, we'll start on Friday, the eleventh, and work from there. There are no other changes from the previous draft.
Yes.
Yeah, questions, guys?
Sorry.
Well, it's okay. Okay. Did a little red light on the microphone?
I don't have my, um, stop with me. The, it was on there, the, the, the nights of the dinners, was it the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth?
Yes, June eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth.
June.
Yes.
You're, you're there.
What were you worried about?
Of this year.
Okay.
Yes, next year, that'll be the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. God help you. Um, the only thing that, that on some of the previous, we will confirm before we get there is, um, I took that darn slide off, but was the, the time, right?
I was waiting here.
Right, so it originally was six thirty, I think you were looking at six, potentially five thirty. I think five thirty is a little early because there's a stakeholder group meeting. You give the candidates a little bit of time between the last stakeholder group and dinner. At six o'clock, we'll work great.
Six o'clock would be good.
Yes.
I'll, I'll figure that.
And we'll, we'll have, we'll have, um, Diane change that. And, and you are, uh, for the sixteenth, there is a bite to, and she'll be coming right from work. We do have food available, um, for you next Tuesday, and that's at five thirty on the sixteenth with, um, with Mr. Fole.
He had something else to decide. Oh, that was on the high school.
Yeah, well, yeah, at some point you can discuss that and get back to me how you want to proceed.
I'll reach out.
Yes.
Okay, um, so yeah, so I just want to point out the school calendar, uh, Dr. D'Angelo just explained that it's same day, same break, but, um, Friday's become a Monday essentially, right? Good Friday has become the day after Easter.
Am I right on that? No, it's still a Friday. It's just not the eleventh, it's.
Well, I mean, the actual holiday of Good Friday, I mean, like in terms of where they held the places. I've explained it again.
So Good Friday this year, or this next coming year in the calendar,
Mm-hmm.
is, is considered a contractual holiday.
That's the eleventh.
No, we, that, we made that mistake.
That's what I said.
So it's, the eleventh is still a non-instructional day for staff. However, the, the contractual day that the non-instructional staff gets off is not the eleventh, it's the eighteenth.
Okay, and as far as the twenty-first, we don't have to have that Monday because it's the day after the holiday?
Yeah. We get, okay, that, even this year, we were here, weren't we?
Would you think of spring break?
Well, so some, so here's, some spring breaks, depends on where you are in the state. We try to coordinate this with our, with the BOSI's. Um, some do it the week before Easter and some do it the week after Easter. To stay in alignment with our BOSI's calendar, um, that, that day, that Monday is a, is a school day. And rather than impact our CTE students on that day, we're having a session, is that?
Yeah, I thought there was a thing that if a holiday fell on us Saturday, you got it on a Friday, falls on Sunday, you got it on Monday.
Easter is not.
That's not.
Constitutional holiday.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because it's, it's, it's always on a Sunday.
Okay.
It's not, it's not one of the recognized holidays.
Okay. Thank you.
People's trying to change.
Tomorrow's out, right? There's one tomorrow.
Okay. All right, um, do we have any future agenda items? Okay, uh, pub session, public or public comment, public may comment, and this time we'd like this to be about the agenda from this evening.
Oh, we got a hand up.
Okay.
And, and Deb, we, we have six people online at this point for, we update that. So with your hand behind your back and blindfolded, I'll let you guess who is going to be.
Sandy or Jen.
The winner is Sandy. I'm working on it. Give me a, give me a second. No, this, this, this is not rocket science. I just, I'm trying to promote. No, this, this is not rocket science. I just, I'm trying to promote Sandy to analyst, but.
Sandy, if you want to speak in public comment, just put your hand back up again.
It's still up. Sandy, could you just, you can't go on chat either because it's a webinar. Okay, I'm going to.
Maybe Sandy, take your hand down and then put it back up again if you have comment, ready for restart.
Sandy, if it's not too much trouble, maybe you could get out of the webinar and get right back in. Somehow it's, it's not recognizing the ability to promote you. My apologies in advance, it's saying that she's declining, so I'm hoping that's correct.
Sandy, call Brett if you need anything. All right, so at this time, I guess, I hate to cut off.
Brett says he has his number.
So hold on, she did, she did drop out. So let, let her. I want to shout out to our last remaining visitor. Thank you for, thank you for coming tonight.
You're compelled.
I'm sorry, Brett. I'm assuming she's having technical difficulties, so I don't know what she want to do. We'll give her an extra minute next time.
Sandy, we just brought to text you, so if you can see that, maybe that's a way that you can communicate your question or comment. Put her in front of a microphone, Sandy. So you're right in front of a microphone, Sandy. Everyone can hear you.
All right, thank you. So I, I really just wanted to put in my, my plea in two cents that if we start collaborating with other schools for sports, that maybe we could also tag robotics in there. Hudson had a team that folded when their tech teacher retired and they haven't had anybody else who is interested. And we'd love to boost our numbers and potentially boost our funding and boost our mentors. So if we can somehow tag in and collaborate with other schools, I think that would be really helpful. And if we're going to start doing that with sports, then I think it would be an easy shoe-in for robotics as well.
Sandy, I don't know if you can hear us, but would, would there have been any reason why you were precluded from doing that? Previously, because I, I mean, I thought Hudson would, would have been a great collaboration. So I'm, I'm just curious what type of challenges there may have been.
Their, their contact information was given to me through the first organization. And they had a Hudson address, so I assumed they were a Hudson student. So I contacted the Hudson High School office and, you know, was trying to get, get them to put me in contact with the student, which ended up not being a student there. But I had broached the subject of, you know, actually forming a partnership and having interested kids. You know, potentially being us over to chat them so that we could have that in the robotics team. And admin, I spoke with the, the person who runs the office. And she said, she pushed back and said, you know, that I would be thinking away potentially somebody, they've been, if they were the, you know, running the club or running the, the organization. And so she didn't think that that would fly. And I said, well, nobody's stepped up in years, so I don't think it's a problem. But I, I didn't pursue it after that. I thought, all right, you know, there's, there's no interest. But I, I, I mean, I would love for other schools to start programs. But if they can't, and we could be the host school and have kids trust to us and then the district's chair and the expenses, that would be huge. I think that would be a huge, a huge benefit to the program.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Brett.
Thanks, Brett. Okay, so at this time, the board will see the need to enter an executive session. We will not be returning to open session afterwards. May I have a motion? Point, Kurt Protemp? First, okay, so may I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll motion.
All in favor? Okay, may I have a motion to appoint Sal D'Angelo as District Court Protemp?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, folks.